I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, one nation.
Thanks, everyone. So I'm just going to take a quick moment to first thank all that are on this meeting tonight. I know we all have busy schedules and other things that we need and want to do. So taking a moment out of our lives to do this is appreciated by my colleagues in the council and I, and believe it or not, and the town too. So this is an important thing that we do periodically. It's been a couple of years. I think we would have done it sooner, but COVID got in the way. Lynn from Ethics, you can see her right in the front screen here. Lynn, thank you so much for taking the time this evening. It is most appreciated. Andy is also on. Andy has done past ethics trainings for boards and commissions. But first and foremost, I thank all that are on the call to take the time. This is important for a few reasons. One is the public knowing that we care about ethics and we care about doing the right thing, both in the actual right thing and the perceived right thing. And I think those are, I'm sure that's going to be some of the things that Lynn goes through tonight. But also for all of us to better understand things that potentially are hiccups, roadblocks, issues that can come in our way in our day to day lives, that this hopefully will bring those to your attention and also help you address them. So the accessibility to the Ethics Commission, the accessibility to our solicitor, our assistant solicitor, and that firm is always there. And of course, to my colleagues and I and the administrator, everyone. So if there's an issue or a concern, we stand ready to address and to act on it. So Lynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Welcome, everyone. I'm going to start by sharing my screen here. One moment, please. And slideshow from the beginning. There we are. Okay. Welcome, welcome to an introduction to the Rhode Island Code of Ethics and the Ethics Commission. My name is Lynn Radesh. I'm a staff attorney at the Ethics Commission and its education coordinator. So I am happy to answer any questions that anyone might have later. I actually received a question ahead of time from Melissa. I thank her for that so that I could prepare a little. So I'll start by addressing that when we're done with the presentation. But the reason I save questions for the end is, in my experience, nine out of 10 times, the question that someone is about to ask is going to be answered in the very next slide or two. It also will allow us to maintain our trajectory forward without kind of weaving into another section that I'm sure will be covered at a later time. So with that, moving on. Again, this is an introduction to the Rhode Island Ethics Commission and the Code of Ethics. Big picture stuff here tonight, my friends. There is no test at the end. No one expects anybody to memorize or even remember every single thing you hear tonight. My approach is to give you a little bit of everything. And if you leave here knowing that there is an Ethics Commission, when you might need us and how to get ahold of us, I'm going to call that a win. Okay? So there's no information that you'll hear tonight that will not be available to you at a later date. You can go on the Ethics Commission website and look at the code in its entirety. You can pick up the phone and call me or one of my colleagues and talk about anything. But again, rather than spend a lot of time on one or two things, I want you to be familiar. So at some point, if someone gives you a gift in your public capacity, you might not remember what that rule is, but you might remember, you know what, Lynn covered gifts. I'm going to give them a call. So with that, this is Article Three, Section Seven of our state constitution, addressing ethical conduct. So it says, "The people of the state of Rhode Island believe that public officials and employees must adhere to the highest standards of ethical conduct, respect the public trust in the rights of all persons, be open, accountable, and responsive, avoid the appearance of impropriety," we will talk more about that, "and not use their position for private gain or advantage." So that's what the constitution expects from us. Here's Article Three, Section Eight, which addresses the creation of the Ethics Commission and the Code of Ethics. "The General Assembly shall establish an independent, nonpartisan Ethics Commission, which shall adopt a Code of Ethics, including, but not limited to, provisions on conflicts of interest, confidential information, use of position, contracts with government agencies, and financial disclosure." The Code indeed contains all of those things and more, which we will cover tonight. Before we jump into the actual Code of Ethics in Rhode Island, I want to orient everyone by just spending a couple of minutes to talk about ethical conduct in general. Okay? Ethics is a standard or philosophy of right and wrong human behavior based on logical reasoning. So ethical conduct is the type of behavior that a logical person would agree is the right thing to do under the circumstances. But here's the thing, people have different ideas about what makes behavior right and wrong. Okay? We have ethics based on culture. I'm sure you've heard the expression, "When in Rome, do as the Romans do," right? Many people think that whether something is ethical depends on the setting in which it occurs, taking into account the local culture, habits, customs. This is the way we've always done things in Bristol. Okay? So ethics based on culture is one way of looking at ethics. It is not the way that the state of Rhode Island looks at ethics. We have ethics based on consequences. Ever hear, "Well, the end justifies the means here." And that's where ethical or unethical conduct is determined by looking at the results. Ethical conduct is behavior that results in more positives than negatives in both quantity and quality. Right? The end justifies the means. Guess what? That's not how we look at ethics, at the Ethics Commission either. Let's look at one more way of looking at ethics. Ah, ethics based on character, where ethical conduct is determined by asking, "What would a virtuous person do under these circumstances?" The focus there is on your character, on your motive. Hey, I'm a fine upstanding citizen. How can I possibly violate something called the Code of Ethics? Even character is not the way that we view ethics at the Ethics Commission. So let me tell you what it is. We are asking you to please focus on your actions. Forget the result. The Code of Ethics tells us what actions to avoid without regard to culture, without regard to consequence, and even without regard to character. Ethical or unethical conduct is determined not by looking at the results, but by looking at the conduct itself and judging its inherent rightness or wrongness. A little bit about the makeup of the Ethics Commission. There are nine members on the Ethics Commission. Four are appointed by the governor. And while the other five are also appointed by the governor, he or she selects names from lists of three to five candidates submitted by legislative leaders in both the House and Senate. I am very happy to report that for the first time in a long time, we now have a full complement of nine ethics commissioners. Okay? They've sat at the last two Ethics Commission meetings. So it's wonderful. It's an excellent group. There are a couple of attorneys. There's a physician. We have a Catholic nun, a real estate professional, a college professor. So it's a really good group that each brings something wonderful to their position on the Ethics Commission. Take a look at how powerful the Ethics Commission is. Advisory, investigative, adjudicative, and even removal powers. I understand they haven't exercised those removal powers. Word has it that if somebody's in that much hot water with the Ethics Commission, that they face being impeached, they usually step down first. So while serving on the Ethics Commission, members are prohibited from holding or campaigning for public office. They may not hold office in any political party or in any political committee. They may not participate in or contribute to any political campaign. All right? And it's the same for the staff. I'm on the staff of the Ethics Commission. Our executive director and chief prosecutor is Jason Grammatt, whom I'm sure many of you know and have had training from before Jason assumed the role of director and chief prosecutor in April of 2018. He had my job for probably 20 years. There are a total of five of us, five of us attorneys at the Ethics Commission. We employ three investigators. They are all former police officers, detectives. Okay? We have a financial disclosure officer, Michelle Berg. You may have heard her name before, or you may want to remember it if you ever need help with financial disclosure. We'll cover that too. So there are 12 of us, and we are at 40 Fountain Street, and I'll give you the information on how to contact us a little bit later. Okay, so who is subject to the Code of Ethics? All elected and appointed officials and employees of state and local government of boards, commissions, and agencies are all subject to the Code of Ethics. Conflicts of interest. I like to start with this one. Conflicts of interest in nepotism, pretty much the bread and butter of the Rhode Island Ethics Commission. Do we address other matters? Sure, every day. But I like to start with conflicts of interest since that's key and super important. So a person subject to the Code of Ethics, that's you, that's me, may not participate in any matter in which he or she has an interest, financial or otherwise, which is in substantial conflict with the proper discharge of his or her duties in the public interest. Now to know what this means, we need to understand what a substantial conflict of interest is. That occurs if it is reasonably foreseeable. I'll define that for you in the very next slide. That he or she, any family member, any business associate, or any business by which he or she is employed or represents, will derive a direct monetary gain or even suffer a direct monetary loss by reason of his or her official activity. So please know that the Ethics Commission makes no distinction between financial gain and financial loss with respect to conflicts of interest. The concern is financial impact. So if someone were to say, "You know, Lynn, I might have a conflict of interest in taking part in this, but truth be told, I'm going to lose money. So I'll take one for the team and I'll do what I gotta do." No, financial impact is financial impact, okay? Whether it's a gain or a loss. So what does reasonably foreseeable mean? Here's your window. The conflict need not be certain to occur, but the probability has to be greater than conceivably. And that's a lot of airspace for reasonable foreseeability. Okay? So the Code will make reference to your business associates in a number of provisions. So I'd like you to have a working understanding of who your business associates are. By definition, under the Code, your business associates are persons or entities with whom you are joined to achieve a common financial objective. So let's look at some examples. Your business partners, those are the fairly obvious ones, right? People you've hired are your business associates, such as your attorney, your accountant, your realtor, your contractor. The Ethics Commission has determined that the landlord-tenant relationship is one of business associates. This one's important. Any businesses or organizations, even not for profits, if you are an officer or serve on the board of directors, and that is regardless of whether or not you are paid for your service. Now, ongoing business associations don't remain ongoing forever. So I'd like you to have an idea of what the Ethics Commission looks at if they're trying to determine the existence of an ongoing business association. They are going to ask, "Are the parties conducting ongoing business transactions? Are there outstanding accounts between the parties? Does one owe the other money? How about an anticipated future relationship?" Now you don't need all three of these things. A yes to any one of those questions is going to trigger an ongoing business association. So a couple of minutes ago, I used the example, realtor. Your realtor is your business associate. If you sold your house in 2015 and you used a realtor and there was an open house, hopefully you got more bids than you can handle, more money than you asked for. You have the closing, all the funds have been dispersed. You're living happily ever after in your new home for the past six years with no plans to use this or any realtor again. If that realtor comes before you in your public capacity, probably not your business associate barring some other relationship. But if your house is for sale now, and pardon me, even if you've accepted an offer, but the closing hasn't happened yet, and your realtor comes before you in your public capacity, that's a business associate, that's a conflict of interest, and you need to recuse. Okay, who are my family members under the Code of Ethics? Because a lot of the provisions will mention your family members. So please know this, whether by blood, marriage, or adoption, here's your list of family members. Spouse, parents, children, siblings, grandparents and grandchildren, aunts and uncles, nieces and nephews, and your first cousins. Now, you might say to me, "Lynn, I haven't spoken to my sister in four years. If she comes before me in my public capacity, I will no more go out of my way to help her than I would to hurt her. I'll treat her like I would anyone else. No conflict. I shouldn't have to recuse." As unfortunate a situation as that is, your sister is your sister is your sister, regardless of the status of your relationship, if a family member appears before you, you have to recuse. Same person might say, "Well, I'm much closer to my best friend than I am to my sister." How about friendships? Does the Code monitor my friendships? It does not. It does not because it cannot. It's so, so subjective. What on earth would the Commission say? Well, how long have you known each other? Did you meet in kindergarten? Did you date in high school? Do you take each other's kids back and forth to practices? Do you talk on the phone three times a week, three times a year? It's too much. But think back to one of those first slides and that constitutionally founded goal of avoiding the appearance of impropriety. Tell you what, if your best friend has a matter before you in your public capacity, that's as good a chance as any for you to exercise the discretion to avoid the appearance of impropriety. Okay? More on appearance of impropriety a little bit later. So think of it this way, a conflict of interest is a situation where a person's public duties and private life intersect. And I know at the beginning I said, "No test. You don't have to memorize anything." But if you leave here tonight remembering anything from all this, make it this, okay? It's not unethical to have a conflict of interest. It does not violate the Code of Ethics to have a conflict of interest, said the woman from West Warwick with 31 first cousins. Okay? It's not the conflict, that's the problem. The potential problem is the failure to identify and manage your conflict. And we at the Ethics Commission help people do that all day long. Okay? So do I have a conflict of interest? Here's what you're going to ask yourself. Is it reasonably foreseeable, more than conceivably, less than certain? Is it reasonably foreseeable that a decision that I'm helping to make as part of my public duties will result in a financial benefit or detriment to me, my family or household member, my outside employer, or my business associate? Ask yourself, even if there's no financial impact, is a family member, a household member, an employer or a business associate a party to or participating in the matter that's being discussed? If the answer is yes, you have a conflict of interest and you must recuse from any participation in that matter. Now you'll notice in the past two slides, the inclusion of the term household member. For purposes of the Code of Ethics, specifically the nepotism provisions, which we'll cover momentarily in more depth. A household member is conflict of interest territory, and that's regardless of whether or not the person is related to you by blood, marriage, or adoption. Okay? How to recuse? Relatively easy. You complete a statement of conflict of interest form, sometimes called a recusal form. They're often kept at your town hall. You can get one online or call us and we'll send you one. We ask that you fill it out. You present the original to your presiding officer or whoever appointed you or your supervisor, and do send us a copy so that we know that you recused. All righty. Onto nepotism. Pardon me. I know I'm zipping right along. You're doing a great job hanging in there. Again, we're trying to get concepts here. All righty. You may not participate in any matter as part of your public duties if there is reason to believe or expect that any person within your family or household is a party to or participant, will derive a direct monetary gain, will suffer a direct monetary loss, or somehow obtain an employment advantage by virtue of your official action. Okay? Now these prohibitions apply regardless of whether or not your family or household member is objectively the most qualified candidate for a job, absolutely deserves that promotion. Okay? The policy underlying the prohibitions against nepotism recognizes it's just really, really difficult for any person to be truly objective when considering matters impacting family and household members. And again, don't forget that constitutionally founded goal of avoiding the appearance of impropriety. Do we at the Ethics Commission think that you could absolutely conduct yourself without bias if a family or household member had a matter before you in your public capacity? Totally not the point. What we do is we remove, we remove from you the obligation to defend yourself in such an action by just taking it off the table. Okay? All righty. Few examples of nepotism. Okay? Not an exhaustive list, but this will get you thinking of nepotism. Hiring a family or household member, awarding a contract to someone in your family or household, any decision regarding your family or household member's property, appointment of a family or household member to a financially remunerated position, participation in disciplinary matters in which a family or household member's employment is at risk. Those are all examples of nepotism. So here's a scenario for you to give some thought to, and just answer it to yourself because we're going to cover it in a moment. So Andy is a member of the town council. The town has just released a request for proposals, RFP, for the construction of a new municipal playground. Okay, Billy is Andy's nephew. Billy's got a construction company that submits a bid in response to this RFP. I'm going to ask you three questions to think about. One, does Billy need to withdraw his bid for this particular job? Because after all, his uncle's on the town council. That's the first question. Next, can Uncle Andy participate in the RFP process in reviewing the bids for this municipal playground as long as he tells everybody upfront, discloses, "Billy's my nephew. I just want it transparent, out in the open." Okay? Or number three, does Andy need to withdraw from every aspect of this project? Because he knows that his nephew's going to submit a bid. If you said number three, you'd be absolutely right. Andy must recuse from all aspects of the bid selection process. Let's look at those other two questions. Why the heck should Billy have to withdraw his bid? Billy's not subject to the Code of Ethics. It's not his conflict. It's his uncle's conflict. Billy's just a kid with a construction company looking for his next job. Okay? That second question I asked was intended to kind of sound plausible because after all, don't we all want transparency? Aren't we all about just putting, you know, doing the right thing and being upfront? In this case, that's not enough. Okay? Andy's got to get out. He can't take part in any of it. All righty. Advocacy and supervision. We're still under nepotism here. So you may not participate in the supervision, evaluation, appointment, classification, promotion, transfer, or discipline of anybody in your family or your household. You know what? You can't delegate to your subordinate any of those tasks either. I'm sure you understand why. If you can't do something, you can't have your subordinate do it because your subordinate answers to you. It's as though you've done it yourself. Okay? Now, the Code of Ethics allows the Ethics Commission to approve what's called an alternate chain of command. And these things come into play ordinarily in, I don't know, legacy jobs, police departments, fire departments, types of work that draw people from the same family. Okay? Now, a couple of things to remember about this alternate chain of command. One, the person who's stepping in for whoever has the conflict of interest has to be of equal rank or higher than the person that has the conflict. Okay? Also, an alternate chain of command may not be presumed acceptable prior to the issuance of a duly authorized advisory opinion. And you will leave here tonight knowing what an advisory opinion is, when you might need one, and how to get one. Recusal. Someone might, I'm often asked, you know, if I recuse, do I need to leave the room? Right? Can I sit at the table? What do I do if I recuse? So recusal does not mean that a public official wants to leave the room if it's an open meeting. But I'll tell you, that's best practice. If you call my office, that's what I'm going to suggest you do. Okay? At the very least, you have to leave the table. Even if your hands are folded, your mouth is closed, and you're just listening, your presence at the table gives an appearance of participation. So at the very least during an open meeting, leave the table. You want to do yourself a favor, leave the room. So no one accuses you of texting someone who's still at the table or of rolling your eyes or trying to throw signals at somebody at the table. Okay? Now, if a public body is in executive session, once an official has recused, no more right to be in the room than any member of the public. You must leave under those circumstances. Okay? See us for contracts. We will brush through this briefly. No person subject to the Code of Ethics may enter into any contract with a state or municipal agency unless the contract has been awarded through an open and public process, including prior public notice and subsequent public disclosure of all the proposals considered and the contracts awarded. Now, there are certain contracts for professional services which are customarily awarded without competitive bidding. Those aren't subject to competitive bidding. Still need to be awarded through a process of public notice and disclosure of financial details. Some examples, physicians, attorneys, engineers, architects, accountants, land surveyors, and psychologists. Secondary employment, sometimes we call this moonlighting. Many of us have a second job in addition to our public position. Here's what you need to know. You may have a private or public sector job in addition to your state or municipal position. However, you may not accept outside employment that does either or both of the following. It cannot impair your independence of judgment with respect to your public duties. Or it cannot induce or require you to disclose confidential government information that you acquired in the course of your official duties. So we often get requests for advisory opinions from folks that want to know if they can accept secondary employment. So I want you to know what the Ethics Commission looks at when they're trying to consider this. They're going to look at the nexus between one's public duties and their private employment. The work has to be completed outside of one's normal work hours without the use of public resources. The public official or employee may not appear before his or her own agency. The work has to be conducted outside of areas over which the public official or employee has decision-making jurisdiction. And a public official or employee may not use his or her public position to solicit business or customers for their outside work. All right? This should come as no surprise to anyone. You may not use or disclose for financial gain confidential information acquired in the course of your official duties. And when I say financial gain, I refer not only to yours, but to anyone in your family or household, your employer, or your business associate. Gifts, popular topic under the Code. If you participate in making decisions, okay, you may not accept cash or forgiveness of debt from interested persons. I'll tell you what they are in a minute. You may accept things of value up to and including $25 per instance and $75 per year per interested person. So what's an interested person? That is a person, business, or representative that has a direct financial interest in a decision that you either make or you help to make. Okay? Now, if your municipality or your agency has a zero tolerance policy on gifts, okay? Not a bad idea. If you have a zero tolerance policy or one that is more strict than the $25 in the Code, then that's the one you have to follow. But if your municipality says, "Yeah, we get it, Ethics Commission. You can't have public officials taking gifts from people that have financial interest in decisions that they make for $25. Come on! That's nothing. That's a cup of coffee and a sandwich. We're going to say it's $100." Nope, please don't. I'm told that back in the day, this $25 in the Code of Ethics was $150 and $450 a year per interested person. So my guess is that it wasn't shrunk down to its present $25 for nothing. So that's what the rule is on gifts. Transactions with subordinates. You may not engage in a financial transaction. By that, I mean private employment or consulting, giving or receiving loans, or money, monetary, political, or charitable contributions with an employee, contractor, or consultant over whom you exercise supervisory responsibilities. Okay? Now, there are some exceptions. Financial transactions in the normal course of a regular commercial business or occupation. Or if the subordinate initiates the financial transaction. Or for charitable events that are sponsored by the highest official or governing body of the state or municipality. Now, no person Now, no person shall solicit or request directly or through a surrogate. Political contributions from a subordinate for whom in that official or employee's uh, duties and responsibilities. He or she exercises supervision over that person. Now, this does not prohibit or limit the First Amendment right of a subordinate to make a political contribution. Okay, so the skinny on this is, is that uh, you can contribute to your supervisor's campaign if you do it on your own. But he can't, he or she can't ask you to, alright? Um, the revolving door, okay, there are several revolving door provisions in the code of ethics. They are designed to try and prevent uh, state uh, and municipal employees and elected officials. From um, taking advantage of the relationships that they've developed, uh, the knowledge they've achieved and everything. Um, that's happened during their public service, okay, we want a cooling off period. So there's a revolving door, there are several provisions, we're gonna cover a couple of them. No elected or appointed official may accept any appointment or election that requires approval by the board. Over which he or she is or was a member to any position that carries with it financial benefit. Alright, that prohibition continues for one year after termination of his or her membership in or on such a body. That's one revolving door provision, here's another. No member of the General Assembly shall seek or accept state employment not held at the time of the member's election. While serving in the General Assembly and for a period of one year after leaving legislative office, that's another revolving door provision. There's a municipal official revolving door provision. No municipal elected official or school committee member, whether elected or appointed, while holding office. And for a period of one year after leaving municipal office, shall seek or accept employment. With any municipal agency in the municipality in which that official serves. The exception is employment that was held at the time of the official's election or appointment, held and maintained throughout the duration of service, okay? Um, you may not represent yourself or anyone else before the agency you are a member of or employed by. Or any other agency for which your agency is the appointing authority. Okay, you may not serve as an expert witness before your own agency. These prohibitions continue for, you guessed it, one year after you leave your public uh, office or employment. Uh, what do we mean by representing yourself or others? That means you participate in the presentation of evidence or arguments before that agency. For purposes of influencing the judgment of that agency in your favor or in favor of the person that you're representing. Okay, there are some exceptions, uh, the Ethics Commission may grant what's called a hardship exception. That would allow you to represent yourself before your own agency. To get one of those, you must request an advisory opinion from the Ethics Commission, let me tell you where this one comes up um, all the time. A member of the zoning board wants to put a shed in his backyard at his residence. And has a problem with the setback requirements and needs a variance. Well, where do you go for a variance, you go to the zoning board, hey, I'm on the zoning board and I can't appear before the zoning board, I really want this shed. So, uh, an advisory opinion is issued. And under these circumstances and those that are similar, chances are very strong that the Ethics Commission will say. Uh, Mr. Zoning Board Member, you may appear before the zoning board for purposes of seeking a variance. So that you may put a shed in the backyard of your home. Okay, but here's what you're not gonna do, you're not gonna take part in the event that night. And you're gonna let everybody know that you got this advisory opinion, saying that you have permission to do this, but you're gonna recuse. Okay, usually when it has to do with a residential piece of property or a personal matter, okay? Um, complaints, we do get them and they're never filed by your friends, I can tell you that. We're not gonna go into a whole lot of detail on complaints with the Ethics Commission, but I want you to know some basics. Any person may file a complaint with the Ethics Commission, okay? It does need to be on a form provided by us and signed under oath with one's original signature. So there are no anonymous complaints accepted. It must name the individual alleged to have violated the code, we call that person the respondent. It must identify the respondent's public office and detail the specific acts which allegedly violated the code of ethics. And this complaint is not public unless and until it's accepted by our executive director. And the complainant is not a party to the action, okay? Couple things, an ethics complaint is civil in nature, not criminal. That is not to say that someone who's got an ethics complaint pending. A civil matter might not be in some hot water with uh, the AG's office or even the US Attorney's Office on the same issue. The ethics, uh, ethics complaint is uh, civil in nature, okay? And uh, the Ethics Commission can um, file complaints on its own following investigations as well. Alright, before you file a complaint, uh, here's what we ask you to do, no one can force you to do this, but. You're thinking about filing a complaint about someone, pick up the phone, call the Ethics Commission and speak with one of our investigators. It'll give you a chance to run your uh, ideas by that person, say this is why I'm thinking of filing a complaint. Uh, Gary, Steve, and Peter aren't gonna try and talk you out of it, but they'll talk you through it, maybe talk about parts of the code and very least make sure you have the right form. Um, to, to submit your complaint. Initial determination is the very first stage of an ethics complaint once it's been accepted, okay? The Ethics Commission is gonna take a look at the complaint and the complaint only, alright, just the four corners of the complaint. Look at it and determine whether it properly alleges facts, that if true. If this is true, what this complaint says, yeah, that's sufficient to constitute a violation of the law. They meet in closed session, the Ethics Commission decides, we're either dismissing this complaint or we're gonna authorize a full investigation. Keep in mind that if something uh, survives initial determination and a full investigation is authorized. That does not necessarily speak to the likelihood of success on a complaint. Uh, that's a very low bar, this initial determination. But after the initial determination, at any time, the respondent and the prosecutor can come to some sort of an informal agreement, a settlement if you will. Now, it does still need to be blessed by the Ethics Commission, but ethics complaints um, can and do. Um, settle before going through um, adjudication. Advisory opinions, we're almost done, you're hanging in here with me very, very well. Uh, advisory opinions are pretty much the other big, big chunk of what I do for the Ethics Commission with my colleague and friend, Teodora Papa. Teddy and I probably draft ninety-five percent of the advisory opinions for the Ethics Commission, so we want you to know. Um, what they are, when you might need one, and how to get one. An advisory opinion is a legal interpretation of the code of ethics, alright, it gets issued by the Ethics Commission. It provides specific guidance about a particular and impending circumstance. And it's based on the representations of the petitioner, the petitioner is the person who asks for the advisory opinion. What you need to know about this is the Ethics Commission does not issue advisory opinions on hypotheticals. These things turn on their very specific facts, okay? Um, and when I say they're based on the representations of the petitioner. If you send in a letter asking for an advisory opinion and I call you up and say, thanks for your letter, I'm gonna draft this, I have a few follow-up questions. Um, don't think that when I hang up the phone from you, I'm gonna get an investigator and say, hey, go check these facts out, nope, what you tell us is what we write. And your advisory opinion will only be worth um, the, the facts to the extent that they're, that they were true. I've never run into a problem with that in my tenure at the Ethics Commission. So, anybody subject to the code can seek an advisory opinion. But it's gotta be about a particular provision of the code which may affect him or her, so you're not gonna write a letter and say. Uh, my aunt sits on the uh, town council in North Providence. And you know, she's got a matter coming up and her niece is involved and should she recuse? Happy to answer the question if your aunt sends us the request, okay, has to have, has to deal with you, alright? The time to get an advisory opinion is before you take any official action. Okay, the Ethics Commission does not opine on past conduct, prospective conduct only. You wanna know if a vote that you took last November was okay? Uh, cross your fingers and hope for the best that there's no complaint. Because the Ethics Commission is not gonna issue an advisory opinion that says, yeah, that vote you took last November, you're aces, no problem at all. Okay, the time, better, better an advisory opinion today than a complaint tomorrow, okay? So how do you get one of these advisory opinions? To request an advisory opinion, you must either mail or hand-deliver to the commission a letter. It needs to have your original signature, and before I tell you the information that you'll need, let me tell you this, during the pandemic, forget. Mailing or handing, hand-delivering a letter to the Ethics Commission. We are accepting and in fact encouraging requests for advisory opinions to be sent in um, via email, okay, and that will suffice. But whether you email or mail it, um, here's what we do need. We need your name, your phone number, your email address, briefly the name, jurisdiction, and powers of your agency commissioner office. We need your official position, a little description of your duties. Uh, the nature of the potential conflict, a summary of relevant facts, and do let us know if you have any time constraints. Generally speaking, the Ethics Commission meets twice each month, sometimes once a month in the summer, always on a Tuesday morning, always at nine AM. Okay, um, we have been meeting via Zoom since April of twenty twenty and it has gone super well. Uh, ask our friends on Block Island, they will tell you, it's been very, very easy for people, you know. On Block Island that would have to hop a ferry and get a hotel room to go before the Ethics Commission, this way you just. Uh, log in and um, it's gone, gone super well. Um, okay, moving on, what happens after you submit a request for an advisory opinion? You're going to get a letter or email saying, we got it, you're gonna get a draft recommendation prepared by a staff attorney. Um, you are strongly encouraged to attend the Ethics Commission meeting. Um, at which your advisory opinion will be entertained, the, the Ethics Commission might have a question for you, right? You might have a question for them, if you're not there to answer it, it may have to get kicked over to another time. Um, let's see, you're gonna get a written copy of the advisory opinion, and regardless of how many commissioners are sitting. You need an affirmative vote of five of them to approve your advisory opinion, okay? Um, these advisory opinions are available on our website. And you should know that both the advisory opinion and your request seeking it are considered, considered public records. And they are subject to an apper request, okay? So when I tell you that these ethics opinions, these advisory opinions are on our website, you can go to the Ethics Commission website. You might uh, type a couple of terms into the search bar, up pop six or seven advisory opinions relative to your search. You read a couple of them and you, you stumble on one and you say, son of a gun, if that's not my question, that is my exact question. For the Ethics Commission, let me see how they handle this. Oh, okay, she was allowed to do this, I don't need an advisory opinion, I'm gonna do what they said to do here, because my facts are the same. Please don't, that is a way to get into trouble, okay? The only person who can rely on any advisory opinion is the person for whom it was prepared. Alright, now do read it, get an idea of which way the wind's blowing, right, for the day that you have yours heard. Um, and you may even see Teddy or me cite it in your draft, but you can't rely on an opinion that wasn't pre- prepared for you. Alright, financial statements, uh, who's required to file them? Um, let's go right to municipal, all municipal elected officials and certain municipal appointed officials, usually has to do with. How much uh, money you have control over in, as part of your job. So, um, chances are strong that if you are required to file a financial statement, you are well aware of it. Because we reach out to those people that do, to remind you, um, and to offer to help you and to let you know when uh, the clock is ticking. Um, so, the purpose of financial disclosure, okay? I promise it is not intended to harass or embarrass or annoy or offend. Financial disclosure helps ensure that people who are acting in the public interest. Do not use their public positions to further their private financial interests. They help identify any conflicts between an official's financial interests and his or her public office. They increase the overall transparency in government appointments and decision-making. And they help further the public's confidence in government, and what's wrong with that? Right, no one's gonna ask you what you paid for your house or how much you have in the bank, that those are not the types of questions on financial disclosure statements, okay? Uh, when are these due, well, they'll do the last Friday in April, okay, um. Hmm, let me see, by the last Friday in April or within thirty days of one's appointment to a public position. Or within thirty days after filing a notice of organization with the Board of Elections or declaring as a candidate, whichever comes first. But do know this, all officials required to file must continue to do so until they've been out of office for a full calendar year. So, if you have not yet filed your financial disclosure for twenty twenty, which was due April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Don't distress, just please get it done. Um, someone from our office may give you a call, say, did you forget? Uh, did time get away from you, do you need help filling it out, any questions? Uh, we are not standing by looking to drop a complaint uh, on midnight, you know, into May first. We want people to file, and, and there's over a ninety percent co- compliance rate at this stage, and that's with them still coming in. Um, and usually, compliance is up around ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent. So, we do have occasionally file complaints, um, but people are pretty good about responding. We encourage you to file financial disclosure online and at the Ethics Commission website. It's, it's a lot easier, it's gonna retain your information year to year, you need only go in and update it. Okay, now if you are old-fashioned and want a paper form to fill out, give us a call, we'll send you one, alright? Um, but we are here to help you figure out how to fill these things out if you need help doing that. This is how to reach us, we are at Forty Fountain Street on the eighth floor in Providence. Our telephone number is two, 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 three, seven, nine, zero. Um, you know, somewhere between, if you have a question, somewhere between doing nothing about it. And seeking a full-fledged formal advisory opinion. Is just picking up the phone and saying, you know, and I wanna talk to somebody at the Ethics Commission about this. We take these calls every day, okay, we keep them to ourselves, we're happy to talk to you. We will give our little disclaimer of what I say to you is not binding on the Ethics Commission, it's just informal advice. Only the Ethics Commission can bless whatever it is you wanna do, but it's good to, to be able to talk these things out. You have been delightfully attentive, for which I am grateful, um. I am happy to answer questions, but you know what I'd like to do is to um, start off with the question that was sent in to me earlier. Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing the screen at this point, I'm rejoining you again, and. Okay, so what I'd like to do is, um, Melissa had sent me a question, so I'm gonna address that first and then I'll open it up. I'm going to address in general, a question that was submitted in advance. Uh, concerning whether a member of the Board of Canvassers should avoid attending political fundraisers. Contributing to political candidates, endorsing individual candidates. So as to maintain the sense and optics of fairness and non-bias, okay? So I will stress, this is general conversation about no actual pending matter. And nothing I say is binding on the Ethics Commission, but that having been said. I would first inquire uh, of anyone about anything in your town charter. Addressing these issues or any other municipal regulations by which an elected or appointed official or employee in Bristol might be bound. For example, the code of ethics prohibits any member of the Ethics Commission or staff. From, among other things, participating in or contributing to any political campaigns. Now that speaks specifically to Ethics Commission members and staff, alright? Uh, at the end of every advisory opinion that gets issued by the Ethics Commission, there is a paragraph in bold which states in pertinent part. That the Ethics Commission offers no opinion on the effect that any other state statute, regulation, ordinance. Constitutional provision, charter provision, or canon of professional ethics may have on any particular situation. Okay, so you've got to check and see what your town allows on that. Now, I will point out, there is a section of the code thirty-six, fourteen, five, I, which states. No person shall give or offer to, among others, any candidate for public office. Alright, any gift, loan, political contribution, reward, or promise of future employment. Based on any understanding or expectation. That the vote, official action, or judgment of said person would be influenced thereby, that's not the same as prohibiting it altogether. But be aware of that, and I remind you of Regulation one point, four point four, we discussed earlier addressing transactions with subordinates, right? You can't solicit uh, contributions from someone that you supervise. Uh, I took a look at an advisory opinion this afternoon in anticipation of tonight, it is AO two thousand and eight dash one. It addresses political fundraisers, contributions, and endorsements. Uh, it is available on our website, I'm just going to cite the summary of that in that advisory opinion. A member of the Johnston Board of Canvassers was not prohibited by the Code of Ethics from participating. In this case, Republican Party fundraising, soliciting Republican Party memberships. Making PAC and Republican Party contributions, or writing letters to the editor and editorials. Notwithstanding his position as a member of the Board of Canvassers. Now, what the Ethics Commission said in that advisory opinion is that shared political affiliations and objectives. In and of themselves, do not trigger any prohibitions set out in the code. Now, they did state specifically, this petitioner could not solicit his subordinates for political contributions. And then it says, if the petitioner becomes financially involved beyond a personal contribution. In the campaign of a candidate whose election falls within jurisdiction of the Johnston Board of Canvassers. He has to advise the board in writing of any conflicts and recuse from participation. And vote in connection with those matters. And the last thing I'll say about this is um. Without a relationship covered by the Code of Ethics, like a business association, a family relationship, an employment relationship. Or some sort of quid pro quo arrangement. Indicating that the petitioner's judgment as a member of the Board of Canvassers would be affected. Nothing in the Code of Ethics would prohibit him from participating in the activities in that advisory opinion. Now, there's a lot to be said for honoring our state's constitutionally-founded goal of avoiding the appearance of impropriety. Okay, while engaging in behavior that might appear improper but is still permitted within the Code of Ethics. Might ultimately defeat a complaint that gets filed against you, right? An allegation of unethical conduct is kind of a tough bell to unring. And if somebody files a complaint against someone, you know where it's going in the Providence Journal, above the fold, huge. What, you know, font. And then if ultimately the complaint gets dismissed, it's a big nothing burger. You'll be lucky to see a retraction on page seventeen in, in eight font, okay? So you have to use your own judgment on this, or if you are specifically faced, this is general information. Saying it's not automatically, uh, you know, um, prohibited by the Code of Ethics, right? But like this or any other issue, if you have an inquiry about a particular matter that has particular facts around it. The safest course of action is to seek an advisory opinion, so I hope this is helpful to that, to that extent, um. With respect to contributions and such. With that, I know this is a lot, your heads must be spinning, you might be hungry, you might be. Wanting to watch television, but uh, if anyone has a question, I'm happy to address it. Some people prefer to call me with their questions, or wait a couple of days and let things settle and, and call and ask a question, but. But if anyone has a question, I'm happy to answer it.
So Lynn, it looks as though there's a hand up, it's Peter Hewitt, I'm gonna just click on him to allow.
Awesome.
And Peter, you can speak now.
Hi, Peter Hewitt.
Peter, you're muted.
Oh, okay.
Just need to unmute yourself.
Maybe we can unmute him?
Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Lynn, a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Uh, we are in Rhode Island, so the question I have for you is during your tenure as a staff attorney on the, on the Ethics Commission. Have you ever had the experience of having politics influence whether an Ethics Commission decision uh. Is taken aboard for action or, or, or ignored? And two, how long must a sitting state legislator wait? Before he is appointed, or she is appointed to a judgeship? And if that's gonna be waived in any way, who has the authority to waive that time, time limit? Thank you.
Thank you for the excellent questions, um. I will address uh, the second question. Um, it is not the first time I've had this question, it's not the last time I'll get this question. Um, so, in the past year. A, a senator, a sitting senator sought an advisory opinion. Asking whether or not she could seek a seat on the Rhode Island Supreme Court. Um, without waiting a year after leaving the Senate. Um, I will tell you that I recused from participation in that particular advisory opinion. And uh, two of my colleagues worked together to draft an advisory opinion. And I'm not telling tales out of school here, this is all public, okay? Well, my recusal, I, I just chose not to take part in this one. Um, that was in public, I shared it with you. So, uh, the staff attorneys that drafted the advisory opinion for this senator. Did their research, and they wrote an opinion that said. The senator must wait one year after leaving public office to seek a seat on the Supreme Court. Now, the reason that when an attorney drafts an advisory opinion, it says draft going across it. Until it goes before the Ethics Commission and is approved, is because the Ethics Commission. Need not accept the recommendation of its staff attorneys. In my experience, which is two and a half years with the Ethics Commission. Uh, I've been an attorney for twenty-four years, but um, I've been with the Ethics Commission two and a half years. In my experience, I would say that ninety-five percent of the time. The recommendation of the staff is adopted by the Ethics Commission, okay? Um, or adopted with a slight, you know, modification in a word here or there. Um, so in this case, that was an example of when the vote, there were seven Ethics Commissioners voting that day. Two of them voted to approve the draft that was written by the staff. Five voted not to, and for that reason, no advisory opinion issued.
All right, can I follow up on that one, Lynn?
Absolutely.
Would you agree, I mean, in other words, the, the, the legislature was allowed to take the position on the Supreme Court. Notwithstanding the one-year hiatus requirement?
The Ethics Commission voted to determine that, uh, that requirement did not. Um, apply in this particular case. I believe that what they noted was, uh, because it was a seat on the Supreme Court. Uh, the argument was made by the petitioner. That that was constitutional office, a constitutional office as opposed to just, uh, you know, a state court. Or municipal court.
Gotcha, thank you, Lynn. No, but the first.
The first question, I think you wanted me to throw mud at people?
No, I just, I just wanted to know, in your tenure, a two-and-a-half-year tenure as a staff, staff attorney. Have you ever personally experienced a situation where politics played a role? In determining whether or not the Ethics Commission would or would not take under advisement, be an advisory opinion, or, or take a case for decision?
Not in my experience.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Pete, I can see, and you had your hand up, Andy Tights.
Um, thank you, uh, Nathan, um, I, I just actually had a comment I was going to mention. Um, I didn't wanna interrupt the flow before, you were talking about recusal and leaving the table.
Yes.
And um, I just wanted to point out, in these days of Zoom, what I always recommend is that people turn off their camera. So that they disappear from the setting. Um, they can stay in attendance, might mute themselves, turn off the camera, now can listen. And that way they know when that matter is over and come back, um, but they're not even seen on the screen, the equivalent of leaving the room.
It's an excellent idea and approach.
The other question I just asked is, cuz it comes up a lot with questions, can you talk about? The idea of, of people's First Amendment right to speak if it's some sort of matter of public importance. Um, they don't feel that it, it doesn't affect their prop, their property personally, but they wanna speak about something that they recuse. You know, can I go speak in the audience about, um, this guy's next door to me, so I can't handle it in the zoning board, I've gotta recuse. Why can't I go in the audience and speak against it?
Good old public forum exception, right? So there's a section in the Code, uh, Regulation one point two point three, public forum exception. No violation of this chapter or regulations shall result by virtue of any person publicly expressing. His or her own viewpoints in a public forum on any matter of general public interest. Or on any matter which directly affects said individual, or his or her spouse, or dependent child. So there is a public forum exception.
So how do you, I guess, I mean, I always advise people just not to do it. But assuming they are looking for a bright line, how do you advise people on the difference between? The public forum, participating in that public forum exception and appearing before their own board? Particularly if they're opposing something.
Yeah, that can get kind of, that can get kind of messy because we've had. Petitioners seek advisory opinions to appear before their own board, and they get both the hardship. And we mentioned public forum, and sometimes among us, we at the office say, well. You know, if there's a public forum exception here, does he, does he or she need a hardship? Or the person's been granted a hardship. But, but a hardship exception is actually for someone seeking something on their own behalf. So I don't think that someone would seek a variance during a public forum. But if somebody wanted to get up and um, you know, give their opinion at a public forum. You know, they're not usually gonna wear their Bristol Town Council t-shirt as they take the podium, or their, you know, hat or whatever. Um. Maybe announce some here, my capacity as a citizen, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Those are the types of things we talk people uh, through on the telephone as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
So Lynn, I don't see any other hands raised in, I'll just remind everyone, I think we're all really familiar with Zoom now, but. If you're looking on your phone or your computer, if you just touch your phone or move your computer cursor around, you get the raise hand feature at the bottom. Just wanted to give another opportunity before we all part ways here and be respectful of everybody's time, but is there any other questions for Lynn? So just give it a second here, and I don't see any other hands raised.
Well, we're not going anywhere, and you know how to reach us if you need us.
Well, Lynn, first off, um, we thank you for taking the time that you did this evening to share all that you did. I actually wanted to make sure that we had a couple of takeaways. One is that, as Lynn just said, the Ethics Commission is there. So if you've got a question, I've had experience with the Ethics Commission to call for actually a couple of advisory opinions. And I found the whole process to be um, understanding and uh, it was. Uh, I honestly, I thought the staff was outstanding, it was, it was, uh, it was great to get that, that knowledge. And feel more comfortable about what the next steps were, so. Um, so you can reach out to the Ethics Commission, you can reach out to the solicitor, and if you're not sure how to do either one. Um, I know that Melissa Gudero, town clerk, has just sent out something to the council. Melissa, maybe you could send to all of our boards and commissions, um, and I've actually saw a school committee member and department heads. Maybe to all, um, the Ethics Commission's telephone number and email and website, just as a reference point. And if you lose it, just get in touch with any of us, we're happy to get it to you. Um, Lynn, any parting words before we all uh, leave and go do those things we do on a Tuesday night?
Sure, a couple of things, I just wanted to thank you very much and, and again, recognize Bristol for. Um, how well-attended this event was this evening, um, it speaks volumes. Um, it really, really does. And the second thing is, I don't wanna speak too soon, but, but presently underway as we speak. I'm developing an online ethics training for people. It's not intended to replace in-person training, but if people want to have a little supplement or they need immediate information. It's gonna be separated into seven different modules, they each last five to nine minutes, you can take them in any order. Um, and it just kind of runs through things for you, it's a recorded Zoom PowerPoint similar to this. But um, that's gonna be coming along sooner than later, I hope.
Thank you, Lynn, and to all of our board and commission members, and actually, department head, school committee members, I saw a lot of people on, employees. Thank you, thank you for taking the moment, you hear me say this on behalf of the council. Is that we appreciate what you do, and we appreciate you taking time, uh, this time, this evening, to make sure that you. Or understand uh, ethics, and also that the town takes seriously your position, we appreciate what you do. You represent the town, and this is just another tool in your tool belt to make sure that we do it very well. And quite honestly, you do, you do an excellent job, and this council thanks you, and the clerk, I can see her, so I know the clerk thanks you too, so. Um, but thank you all, and actually, this is a uh, advertised council meeting, so just need a motion to adjourn from one of my colleagues. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, all right, good night, everyone, and again, thank you, thank you.